Yes, well said.
Thank you.
Can we move on? Did you all finish? Tom, you finished?
I-
Is there more old business?
Any more old business? You said you had- We're on old business.
So, I'm agreeing with you.
You're agreeing?
Yes, I'm just indicating that I'm getting my reports from you, and if unnecessary, from Calvin, and if I have questions, I give them to you and you get me answers, is that correct?
That's correct, I did the same thing when he was-
Well, please-
Can we work?
I have all overall responsibility for seeing what goes on in the town. Okay, we're finished?
I don't know if we are finished, I mean, I need to know that the only people who are at that meeting are the ones who are supposed to be there by the direction of this board.
Mr. Martin, I gotta apologize, I'm sitting here and I'm trying not to get involved in something that is on that level. But I've got to say that for the benefit of the residents, sitting here, I believe there's a little bit of a disconnect because we're sort of circling around some subject matter and not being very clear. And so, I feel an obligation as Town Administrator to clarify some things. You have been advised by your insurance attorney and your town attorney about the fact that the mayor has made comments and has conducted himself in a manner that raises the question of whether or not these are conflicted with what the intentions are. Mayor, in all due respect, you've been at the executive sessions, you had the loggerhead battles with the town attorneys down at the church on September 11. After the last town meeting, I think residents talked about the loggerheads that gets created. And so, what I think the residents need to understand is this is not on the level of personality conflict. This is on the level of a $20 million lawsuit and legal issues that the people that you pay to represent you and represent you as residents are saying, "You've got to get this situation under control." There, this, you know, it's not my place, but I'm gonna say it. There's been lawsuits that have been filed, there are actions that have been taken. People have attended meetings in the past, going over the last two years, where certain things have been represented, it's said, and this elected body is sitting here trying to protect you without being, and I think the lady in the back talked about, being respectful of your elders. It is a very difficult situation to deal with, and I understand what you're saying. But this is a legal issue that legal people are saying, "Please, dear God, don't make these taxpayers have to pay this $20 million lawsuit. It's not covered by insurance." And I know you guys are strongly to say that, so I'll say it. That's what this is about. This is about being advised by attorneys to get this situation under control. This is not a personality conflict. This particular item is not a personality conflict. And so, I apologize for jumping in here, but I think residents need to know that, that that's what the crux of this argument is about.
I appreciate you saying that, Mr. Bonner-Burka.
This does not directly have anything to do with what you're talking about. I'm not allowed to talk about it, so I won't say it. So, anyway, that's fine. Are we finished now?
I want to know that because of the liability issues that you have consistently created for the town, you will not be going to the next water and sewer update?
I want proof that you, that I have created a liability. When you furnished me that proof, then me and Oliver-
And again, this goes back to my point that I made, this goes back to-
Respect your elders, I'm elderly. Come on!
I'm elderly.
Open the ears, everybody's been telling you what's going on.
This goes back, thank you, this goes back to the point-
But they're not telling the truth.
This goes back to the point that I made, that there, that some of the things, some of the things that are liability issues cannot be discussed, cannot be discussed here because the minutes have been sealed by executive session. We cannot discuss them, we've been advised by our attorney not to discuss them. It doesn't mean they haven't happened, it just means we can't discuss them. If I, yeah, if I, if I in the public meeting divulge the reasons why I am asking you not to go to the meeting, I will put the town in for the liability, and I don't want to do that.
Can I ask you a question? Will other members of, will the other commissioners be allowed to go to the water and sewer-
No.
-project? The only one that will be allowed to go will be, would be you, correct? Would be Calvin, correct? Oh, you're not gonna answer that, right? Well, the people wanna know that, Mr. Norton. It's like the gag order, nobody's seen a copy of that either.
Okay. Can we get back to, is there any more old business?
Are you going to answer my questions, sir?
Don't answer- No, I'm not gonna answer your question.
I then make a motion due to the sensitive legal nature of the construction of the wastewater treatment plant and the liability to the residents of the Town of Rising Sun for pending lawsuits totaling $20 million, that Mayor Robert Fisher be barred from the wastewater treatment plant update meeting.
You have a second? Any further discussion?
I just seconded it. You're asking for further discussion?
Yeah.
My only discussion is this, and I'm gonna make it very brief. And I think the Town Administrator has spoken about being disrespectful to your elders. This has nothing to do with age. Like he has said, we were instructed by the attorneys. There are some things that cannot be released. With that, that's the only discussion that I have. So, thank you, sir.
Joanne, do you have any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Are we finished now?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. New business.
I've got new business.
What's the new business about?
We've had a request from Officer Stickney, from Officer Stickney and from his attorney for the town to pay the legal fees that he incurred defending himself successfully against a felony complaint. Since he is an employee of the town and he was found innocent of all charges, I believe that the town should pay his legal fees, and as such, I am going to make a motion that we pay the legal fees associated with Officer Stickney on the charges for which he was found innocent.
Moved, I mean, we've had a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll second. I believe this should be deferred. We have here a legal opinion about that, so I think we should have that, a private discussion about that, it's not to be discussed in public meetings. So, I think we should table this until we've discussed it with the attorney.
This is illegal opinion, though, correct? This is, we have it right here, this is basically his-
So, you wanna override the legal opinion of your attorney?
The legal opinion of my attorney did not give an opinion. He said that it was entirely up to the elected body, from what I read in this letter, and-
I don't think I have anything else yet.
I guess I have a question, I mean, since we're having discussion now, I can ask the question. My second was actually partially just so I could follow up. This letter seems to indicate to me that, as you say, we have no obligation to pay necessarily, but it certainly, there are certainly cases where it's been done because of this penalty deemed appropriate, because the person was found not guilty-
Right.
-fully, fully exonerated, as Officer Stickney was. So, it's up to us, and I guess I will ask a question of the Town Administrator. If I understand the conversations we've had, I don't know how far, how I can ask this. If we don't, I guess I'll ask it this way. If we don't pay these legal fees, and I'm sort of deciding whether I think it's a good idea or not, will we incur additional legal fees anyway?
I think the possibility is always there.
I guess what I'm asking is, do you think, is there a reason to think that if we don't do this anyway, we'll spend money defending ourselves because he might sue us for compensation?
Point of order, if I may, Mayor, I believe this is a personnel issue and should not be discussed at this public meeting. It should be an executive session, should not be out here on the floor.
Okay. I withdraw my question.
So, do you agree to table this motion?
I agree to table the motion.
Do we have to have a motion to table the motion?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I'll have to look it up when I go home, but I think we're, okay. Can we move on now?
Yes, please.
Okay. It's time for citizens' input. Now, which order, who was first? Do you remember who was first on the list?
Tom Mummey.
Tom Mummey's first on the list.
I have something just very brief, and just wanted to bring to the boards. Primary, Joanne, I think you and Calvin would be involved. Last evening, my wife and I noticed that new Christmas lights, the light over here in front of Bud's, and then the light going down the street next to it, and then in front of PNC Bank, they're all dark.
I did mention one of those too. I did, did Ron last-
I think when I saw him at the, Christmas at Caroling, I told him about the one light that I saw. All, there's three of them all, and if I remember right, these lights are installed in groups of three, and I think it's gonna take an electrician, an outside contractor, to come in and repair. I don't think our public works people have the technology to be able to do that. So, I bring that to your attention, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Augie Pearson.
Good evening, this is Augie Pearson, 102 Little Brick Court, in Rising Sun. I really wasn't going to say anything earlier about this, but you brought this up, Mr. Fisher. Yes, the Frappel lawsuit is a very sensitive issue, sir. And as we stated at the last meeting, you were asked by the commissioners, by a majority vote, not to attend these meetings, okay? And please, if you disagree with me, it's videotaped, and you admitted that you were told not to do it, correct?
That's not the Frappel lawsuit, that's the sewer plan.
Sure.
They're two different things.
But it was, the basis of it is the Frappel lawsuit, sir.
I don't think so.
Well, I know you don't think so, okay? But you're also the person that prior to coming into any elected office, went to MDE and USDA and interfered as a private citizen with our lone information and our commitment from MDE. Now, Mr. Fisher, I want to remind you, you have a very good habit of saying, "Get your facts straight." My facts are straight, because I know Ms. Virginia Kearney told you, "Do not call her ever again."
Well, that isn't fact.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, now-
We're gonna state her, Mrs. Kearney, that'll settle that.
Well, Mr. Fisher, I was the water and sewer commissioner at the time-
That's fair what you were. Well, I'll talk to Mrs. Kearney, and if she agrees with you, then I'll apologize to you.
Point of order here. Mr. Fisher is making comments, and we are to listen, not argue with him, please.
Okay. Let us deal with the fact that I asked you last meeting, how you were going to explain to your daughter and son-in-law, and now I want to expand upon that. To Mr. Campbell, to Mr. Braun, to everybody in this room. If we lose the Frappel lawsuit, how we're expected as taxpayers to pay over $22,000 apiece? I'm asking.
That's up to you individually. I'll pay my $22,000, I'll advise my son-in-law and daughter to pay theirs, and I will do it.
But, Mr. Fisher, don't you hear what I'm saying? I don't have that kind of money. Most of the people in this room do not have that kind of money. Yet, you are consistently interfering against legal advice. Now, legit, Mr. Colerisi has been our attorney with this since the beginning. Mr. Colerisi is advising you now, correct?
Mr. Colerisi, no.
Mr. Colerisi is advising you, sir.
No, he hadn't talked to me but once, and that was a long time ago. But I, I keep track of how long he's talked to me.
Okay. The point of it is, Mr. Fisher, you potentially, with your interference, are costing us our houses. And you're gonna say, "Help!" Before you roll your eyes, Mr. Fisher, and I have this not only from the town's attorney, but from my own private attorney. If we lose this lawsuit, no, they cannot file individual liens against the taxpayers, not the water and sewer users, but the taxpayers. However, to satisfy the lawsuit, the town can create a tax. If that tax, then, is not paid, a lien can be placed against your property. Ask your lawyer, I know you're good at asking lawyers, so ask him, okay? Now, is that, I ask you honestly, whether people support you or don't support you, is that really worth putting us in that kind of situation as taxpayers? And remember, if we lose Frappel, we have two more that are gonna use the very same argument against us. I can tell you don't agree with me, Mr. Fisher, but I'll tell you this. I know what we went through with MDE and USDA, with you making unauthorized phone calls. But not when they're saying they're acting on behalf of the taxpayers.
I never said that. So, okay, next big person. Let me cut to the number. Tom Mulaney.
While he's coming on, I just want to apologize for keeping on leaving. I knew Mr. Burkman wouldn't be here. So, I know if I wasn't here, there wouldn't be a quorum. I'm not doing my best tonight, so I start running out and back in again.
Tom Mulaney, 14 East Main Street.
I'm gonna say something. Because we're taping this, just state whether you're a resident of town or a non-resident of town, because that way, since it's gonna be on Facebook, your address isn't actually given out.
Okay, well, I guess everybody now knows where Mr. Pearson is.
There's a whole lot of people knew where I lived before that.
No secret on that.
I came here tonight with a prepared speech. It was a speech of hope and looking forward to the next year, and some ideas I had to submit to the mayor and the commissioners. I'm not gonna make that speech tonight, because frankly, as I've seen the results of this meeting, I am deflated. No matter how much the citizens talk about the respect and the courtesy, there's still, there are still airs of cynicism and hostility that fly through this room. I don't know whether I'm coming to a town meeting or to Tuesday night fights. This has got to stop. People have got to start acting like adults. And I came here from Baltimore, and then three years ago, I moved into Rising Sun. A decision I made because I fell in love with the town and the people. But ever since the first time I came into this town hall, I've seen the people confused, angry, and upset over the demeanor of the board and their lack of cooperation and lack of progress. I thank Bud for his friendship, and his well-deserved retirement now, but that's another shop that leaves town. That's another loss of revenue to the town. We've got to come together, people, because if we don't, then there's no business that's gonna come into this town after reading the paper and seeing the behavior of both our government. They're just not gonna come, because they don't want, you can call anyone to be an ambassador, but if they read the paper or click in on you two, they're not gonna wanna come here and do business. We've got to be a civilized town. We already are a friendly town, thank God. And I thank God every day that I came into this town and decided to make it my own. But it's because of the people, and I'd like our government to reflect the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Alan Althamery.
I'm just standing right here instead. I can't say it any better than what this gentleman just said. Alan Althamery, and I am a town resident. I couldn't say it any better than what Mr. Mulaney just said. Bud, thank you for all the years and what you've been the face of Rising Sun here, and many a time pulled me out of a hole and I had to walk to your place and couldn't drive my car someplace to get something. So, everybody needs to stop in and commend this gentleman. And like you said, it's another vacant storefront. Pretty soon, we'll be known for a whole vacant lot, and some of these stores have been open for quite some time, so. One other thing I have to say is, one business kind of closes and goes away. We've got a new business outside of town that we should embrace, and they need our help and support. Plump and Park Zoo, they've turned that place around and gave it a good thing to go with the Town of Rising Sun. They can use volunteers, supplies, anything, and whether you're an animal lover or not, they need our support out there. So, I'd just like for that to be said at this time of year, and wish everybody a better 2013. Calvin, thank you for all the support that you've given the P&amp;Z board, and all the help you've given us in the past year to get through it, and we're looking forward to next year. That's all I got to mention.
Keith Campbell.
How you doing tonight? Keith Campbell, from resident of the Town of Rising Sun. I'm just gonna kind of talk about the things that Tom spoke about. I was lucky enough to attend a town meeting with my brother. He lives down in Kentucky. And it's nothing like this. Everybody is shaking each other's hands, and they're all, they have cookies, they have hot cocoa, they have coffee, and everybody seems to be friendly towards one another. And they get things accomplished there. And it's, there's 900 and some odd people in this town. My brother's the attorney for the town, so that's the reason why I went to the meeting, because I wanted to see how things went there. And to look at the way we function here, it's really despicable. And it just seems like the reason why we keep causing problems here is because you guys have an agenda, and then Mr. Fisher has an agenda. And your agenda doesn't seem to coincide with Mr. Fisher's, and Mr. Fisher's doesn't seem to coincide with yours. And from day one, when Mr. Fisher was put in office in this town, it's been nothing but this from day one, day one. He started with resolution after resolution. And why is it that every time we come to a meeting, we have to pass some kind of resolution? Why can't we come to this town meeting one time and say, "We don't need to pass any resolutions tonight, let's just go about business," instead of, "Let's think of some type of resolution where we can stop Mr. Fisher." And here's the other thing. I wanna take up for Lisa Toen, because Lisa Toen has been around this area for a long time. She's worked for the Rising Sun here for a long time. And from what I've seen from Mrs. Toen, she only prints what the truth is. She only exposes things that need to be exposed that the people in the town need to know about. And as far as her being biased, I don't think she's been biased at all. I think she prints what's out there, and maybe if you don't like it, that's your opinion. We all got opinions. I mean, my opinion is not the same as his or yours or whatever. But we have to work together in this town. And the people in this town, I grew up here my whole life, and I've never, ever seen this board of people ever function like this in my entire life. It's disgusting to me, and we're the laughing stock to Cecil Carey, and I get around all around. People are laughing at the way you all do business. And you ought to be ashamed of yourselves. I mean, why don't you sit down, this is Christmas time right now, man, we can all sit down and have a friendly drink, or whatever it may be, or a meal, and we could actually all enjoy each other's time together, you know? And point fingers back and forth, pointing this, now, and this one did this, and this one did that. We're not getting anywhere. So, and as far as the petitions, you guys are talking about petitions being circulated. I haven't even heard anything back from the petitions that I brought. And that was all done in the proper manner, I haven't heard a thing yet. The time is up for you to respond to the petitions, nothing's been done yet. So, I guess we'll have to take that further on, because I understand that there's a petition that's going on as far as with the removal of Mr. Fisher. I heard they had 77 votes. Well, 77 votes is a far cry from the amount of votes that I had. I had 200 and some, there was 400 on the other one. Now, here's the other thing that I wanna get at. These are the people that are in this town, okay, that are all registered voters, okay? Now, if I can get 100 and some signatures, but we can only get 200 and some people to vote, that ought to tell you something about what the people are trying to tell each and every one of you members up here on this board. Stop acting like children, and let's start getting to the business of the town and making this town a successful town. And it's just, I can't believe that my town's turning into this much of a laughing stock, to be honest with you. I'm not gonna point fingers at anybody, but, you know, that's where we are. And then, as far as with the Frappel lawsuit, who were the commissioners when the town was annexed, when the Frappel property was annexed in, in the first place? Does anybody know who the commissioners are?
Yes.
Can you tell me?
Yes.
Because I've never been able to get that at the end.
That, they were, that was annexed in 2004. So, you would've had, I believe,
Porter.
Keith Porter. Clint Bowers.
Clint Bowers. Judy Majeski.
No, Majeski. No, Majeski. No, Majeski did not come to 2006.
Roy Smith.
Roy Smith.
A blink, he was Roy Smith. Harold Webb.
And listen, not all of us here, I mean, let's not point fingers at anybody, okay? But they were the people that were involved in this. And this is what I think. I think we have all good people here, okay? I think we're all heading, we wanna head in the right direction, but we just can't get it together. And here's the other thing, you know, maybe these people that, when they annexed this property in, okay, were not, let's say, they weren't briefed properly. And they didn't know what to make the right decision to make.
Keith, you're right.
And I think that's, I think that's the problem.
We found out that it was annexed afterwards.
Wait a minute. We've gone ten minutes with this speaker, and you pulled out your watch on anybody that speaks in opposition, but you allowed, I'm hitting Keith Brandon Rich for that. You didn't press that thing when he started.
Keith, you're right. Let me clarify this, Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Molly, you've spoken out of order on several occasions, and I'm gonna tell you something.
That's a point of order, Mr. Campbell.
No, you've spoken out of order on several, no, no, let me finish, okay? He's spoken out of order on several occasions, okay, and so have you, and so have I, okay? But here's the thing, okay? But here's the thing. Let's make sure that everybody does it in the same manner. Okay?
Thank you very much. Bud, okay, Richard Braun.
My name is Richard Braun. I'm a resident of Rising Sun. And I was, he spoke before me, and I was just wanting to kind of find out, what's the status on the four hundred and twenty-something signatures we turned in for the referendum of 2012-3? We haven't heard anything from nobody. We turned it in within the twenty days that were required. You had fifty days to respond. You hadn't heard anything. Nothing from nobody. So, you're in violation of the law, is that right? Please check that out.
I will.
And also, did you all get a copy of a letter from an attorney, Ishak? Jay Gola got?
We received legal correspondence late this afternoon, which we have not yet.
Is this correspondence?
Has a chance to read. I'm sure that's in my packet.
Okay, I think you ought to pay attention to that. We're waiting for a response. Will you respond to him? Would you like me to read this to the whole group?
Yeah. But we're not gonna respond.
I'm just, ask the reader, Bud. If you have any questions, you can contact.
We'll contact everyone. We'll respond to that.
But I think maybe the town people would like to hear. If I have to turn, I don't want to. I'm not a speed reader. Anybody wanna wave their time to me? Okay, this is from an attorney named Ishak, Paul Ishak. And it was mail, in fact, similarly to Jay Gola. It says, "Dear Mr. Gola, I have in my possession copies of two petitions for referendum presented by Keith Campbell to town of Rising Sun. The petitions for referendum appear to contain the signatures of more than five percent of the registered voters of the municipality. Maryland Constitution, Article Nine, Ashley, Section Four, requires an election when these points take place. Please advise me of the town's progress on the following points. First, what has the town done with the original two petitions for the referendum since their receipt? Second, what was the town's official position in response to the receipt of these petitions? Assuming, no written position of the town was presented to Mr. Campbell, please advise what the town has done to verify that the signatures thereon are from the valid municipal voters. What action has the town taken to create a balance for the issues raised in the petitions, assuming confirmation of the signatures? What does the town plan to conduct the election required by the receipt of the petitions, assuming confirmation of the signatures? What meeting, public or private, has the town council conducted regarding the issues raised by the petitions for the referendum or the receipt of petitions for a referendum? What legal petition has the town received from the Maryland Attorney General's Office or private counsel regarding the proper course of conduct to take upon the receipt of the petitions for referendum? In closing, this letter acts as a request for photo copies of documents under the State Codeman Article related to the inquiries made here. In summary, they are: Copies of the petitions for the referendum presented by Mr. Campbell, reflecting all signatures thereof from January first, 2011 to date. Copies of the town's response or determination of the sufficiency of the petitions for the referendum presented by Mr. Campbell. Copies of any documentation reflecting verification of signatures upon the petition from January first, 2011 to date. This concludes correspondence with the Cecil County Board of Election Supervising. Copies of the ballots or graphed ballots reduced in referendum elections from January first, 2011 to date. The documentations reflecting the notices for the date of any referendum elections from January first, 2011 to date. Meeting minutes, notices of meetings, or other documents related to the receipt of the petitions for referendum presented by Mr. Campbell. And last, copies of the legal opinions from the town general officer or town council regarding the town's required course of conduct upon receipt of the petitions for referendum presented by Mr. Campbell. Upon cooperation in addressing these matters on behalf of the petition from the town of Rising Sun, I straight appreciate. If you believe these matters are best left for circuit court to decide, rather than having these matters later at the town council level, please advise. Paul W. Ishak.
What's the date of that?
Just have it reset.
Okay. Next, Phil Smith.
Hi, my name is Phil Smith. I am a town resident. I gotta tell you guys, I thank you for passing the resolution. Great. This is better than a reality show. You can't lift this stuff up. I gotta tell you, Mr. Mayor, you had said that you wanna make the town better. Yet, is that correct? You wanna enhance the life? I forget your exact word.
Quality of life.
Quality of life. Yet, ever since you've been on board, it has been nothing but turmoil and chaos. Unbelievable. There's no I in team, sir. You guys have to work together. Team, teamwork. That's how we're gonna get it done. If you wanna really make the quality of life better in this town, you've called M.D. on your own, you've done some personal things around here, you've wanted to remove our police force from the town. That's fact, sir. Yet, with all the dogs and everything, I think Chip's doing a great job, and he needs more patrolmen to help us out here. For a town of twelve hundred residents, we have more politics up here than Baltimore City does. If you really wanna improve the quality of life, you will remove yourself from office and step down. Thank you.
Shelly LeSharon, a town resident. Obviously, things that I wanted to say, not which or what I really came here to say, but because of everything. Mr. Mayor, I actually was sitting in the back row, and I became very emotional. Because that person that you're talking about that is against you, I'm the one that took and got the petition signed. And at the last meeting, I was very, very humble and explained that I was very morally conflicted about that because I would never wanna cause harm to another human being. You comment up here like that was easy for me to do, to circulate a petition, to ask another person to step down. You know, I'm just, I just wanted to point that out, that I'm a human being, my daughter's sitting back there, and that I'm a town resident, that should the lawsuit be lost, I could potentially lose my house. And that was a factor. And I'm also the type of person that, you know, I believe that when you're a part of a community, that if you can help it. Sir, I didn't ask that you, I, the petition was to ask you to step down. But it was also a petition to maybe give you a wake-up call, that if you weren't willing to step down, that you would maybe be, reflect and say, "What could I change to maybe work better with everyone"? That's one thing I wanted to say. The second thing to say is, Mr. Campbell, I don't really know who you are. Mr. Braun, I don't know you either, so I hope you don't hear me being mean, but I was sitting there. And I hear your remarks and the bravado that's coming from that side of the section there. And, you know, my husband reached out to you through email and stuff, tried to contact you, to talk with you, but...
I've never got any emails from your husband.
Okay, I'm just...
Okay, I'm just saying, I haven't got any.
I'm not accusing you of anything. Well, I'm not accusing you of anything, so...
Well, let's take the back.
One person at a time.
Okay, don't attack me. I'm just, I'm just talking to you.
Not a dialogue.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay, so my point is this, is that I know that everyone wants to work together as a team for what's good for the town. I don't believe that you have an impartial stance in what you want for the town. I've listened, I've heard the commentary and the discussion that was going on there. If something were to happen with this lawsuit, there are people that are sitting in this room that live on fixed income, that are renting, that will potentially lose their homes, be forced to leave. The lawsuit isn't necessarily, the whole thing is not about Mr. Fisher as a person. It is about his style, that he is, and I'm not sure if this is the right word, I'm a little nervous, the style in which you're being the mayor. We've tried to talk to you on many occasions, and it's a very combative, I had to actually ask my daughter to leave. It's such a combative atmosphere that everyone is forced into this box, and everybody is trying to work towards Rising Sun. And it's just not working like it is, you know? And as far as the petition goes, I was told, when I said that I was bringing a petition here, that nothing was gonna happen because of my petition. I was, I'm just letting you know. I was told, because I heard everything, and now you're wasting my money filing that legal documents?
I'm not wasting your money.
No, you're wasting my money.
No, I'm filing them.
No, you're wasting...
Municipal laws.
Right, but what's happening is, you're wasting my money and the rest of the taxpayers' money by getting attorneys involved and everything else. That is a statement that I am making, and it's frivolous. What you're doing is frivolous. And there are people on fixed incomes, there's people unemployed, there's children that don't have what they should for Christmas, and you're filing frivolous things, making our attorney, making our attorney work. And we are paying for that. For what? What do you gain by doing that?
I think that, I think that you've been completely wrong, okay?
Mr. Campbell, will you head your turn, please?
Yes, okay. Well, she's directing questions.
Well, because, sir, you're messing with my wallet. This is what I'm trying to say.
They're messing with my wallet.
How so? How so? Because you sold your house in June of 2012.
I have another house in town.
That's fine, I'm just saying that you do. You have several properties.
That's right.
Then this should be of great concern to you, because you'll be one of the ones hit the hardest financially.
And my mother and father are eighty-seven years old.
This is not a dialogue. This is a monologue.
So, my point is, that any time you file paperwork with an attorney, you're spending taxpayers' dollars. You're spending taxpayers' dollars, sir.
I don't spend anybody's money.
If you file, you are spending my money. I'm sorry. The last thing that I want to say is that, Mr. Mayor, I am begging you. This is not a game for the people of Rising Sun.
I can cry too, but I...
You've got to be kidding me.
Oh, you've got to be kidding.
Absolutely.
Oh, my gosh. Unbelievable.
People will lose children.
Right, go. Right, go, Mr. Fisher. Right, go. That's about as ignorant as anybody can get.
Bring the pitchforks next time.
Yeah, you are.
I think we all should just be like that.
Good job, Bud.
Yeah, I think that's about it.
I have something to say that's unrelated to all of this.
On a lighter note.
On a lighter note.
Because of the holidays, please wait.
Joanne Pugh, are you Joanne Pugh?
Please wait, one minute.
No. I'm Lynn Griffith.
I know, please wait. On a lighter note.
Well, you can talk, but we go on the orders on this list.
Okay.
Joanne Pugh, was she here? Jamie King.
Well, I touched on this a little bit at the last town meeting, but I wasn't too prepared. I am a town resident, so I wasn't too prepared, so. I had a, on October twenty-third, after the town meeting, I was standing out by the steps. It was like, all the kids were here talking about the explorers program. And I overheard the mayor talking to Sergeant Osborne, who's sitting back there. The things I was hearing was a little disturbing, and it hurt. He started off by saying Officer Stickney's trial, that, you know, you weren't happy with the outcome of the trial. And I saw that for a fact, because I was at the whole trial, just like you, when you were back in the corner sleeping, or, you know, whatever you were doing, trying to persuade, persuade the jurors by talking to them on numerous occasions. And then, he came up to hear the verdict, and the verdict was already read. And when we told you the verdict, you shook your head in disappointment. Then you went on to talk about the chief. He wasn't doing a good job for the police department, which I think is a bunch of crap, because chief might think you're doing phenomenal stuff. Then you went on to start telling them about how you think everybody in the explorers program should have extensive background checks completed, because you don't want them corrupting the youth. He asked you who you were talking about in the program, and you responded, "Jamie", referring to that. You went on to tell them that I'm a convicted felon and have no business dealing with the youth. First of all, I have no part in the program. Never did, never planned on it. But I guess you just thought I did because I support the program. And you went on to tell them that I'm selling drugs out of my cousin's house, and my cousin knows about it, and, you know, that's all okay. Then you go and went and said that you feel Mr. Westbrook is a degenerate and shouldn't be, have a part in this program. Mr. Westbrook is a personal friend of mine. I know he volunteered to coach wrestling for the high school. He volunteers to coach track for the high school. You know, he helps everybody out, but you wanna sit here and bash everybody that you don't know. You always talk about getting your facts straight. I think you need to get your facts straight by going and telling people I'm a drug dealer and a convicted felon. Nothing? You look like you're stuck. I mean, I know a lot of the stuff we say is a joke to you, but, I mean, I take it pretty seriously. I'm a single father, raising a kid, and you wanna sit here and hammer me that I'm a convicted felon.
When you don't know anything about me.
You know nothing about me. Nothing. You say, "Because the way we dress is..." You say because the way we dress is, people will talk about it. I guess jeans and sweatshirt is inappropriate dress? Do I need to wear a suit all the time? You're not saying nothing, like you're just sitting there not saying nothing.
You're talking, I'm listening.
I'm waiting for a response. You don't have nothing to say, you've done nothing. Anything, anybody said to you, you don't say nothing.
Are you finished?
I am finished, are you ready?
Yeah, one for one.
To give me your response.
This is not a time to respond.
You're a coward, a straight-up coward.
Okay, Justin Westbrook.
Justin Westbrook, I'm not a town resident. First thing I wanted to bring up was the status of the Explorers Program, Calvin. Where are we at with that? We have to renew the post before we get it a year, so we continue for next year. Is that something we could possibly start doing now, so we can get it done before the end of the year?
I didn't, I didn't hear, what do you have to do by the end of the year?
We have to renew the post, it expires the end of, the end of December, so it needs to be renewed every year.
Yes. I, I don't wanna speak for the board, I, there isn't going in Christian or not, Mary, you were there when we were talking. We had an opportunity to talk to the legal representative of Legit last Thursday. As I've said before, this program will work, but there really is some debate on what has to be enacted. So we have that direction now, I gave her the paperwork that you gave to us, and I just have to come back in the January meeting with a frame of.
That's where my problem comes in, is that the post is already established. If we don't renew the post by the end of the year.
That's my point, I, I don't want to speak to the board.
You guys are all here, is it possible to renew the post, keep it suspended?
Mr. Westbrook, that's, that's the thing I'm trying to clarify, I don't wanna speak for the board. Legit, as essentially said, it's a doable program. So, you know, you need to vote on it at some point. I think I can get back to you with all of the paperwork, it's necessary, Christian, Mary, you were there, regardless. I suggest, if you feel comfortable that give him.
No, I don't want the, I don't want our post to lapse, so if we can renew it, it ain't gonna be there.
On the same terms that it is right now until we figure out.
Yes, and still be suspended until you guys figure out if you want the kids to do it or not.
Yes, that, that's what I'm, that's what I want them to understand, that Legit is gonna say at the end of the day, it's okay. We just have to get all the ducks in line.
I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that you go ahead and do that, so you don't lose the post, as long as we will agree that it will be kept suspended until you get notice from the town.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
What was the motion, I'm sorry.
We gotta renew the posts, the post itself, because it ends, it lapses at the end of every year.
On December thirty first.
I don't know that that's, I don't think that's a function of the town's word on renewing the post, now what we're, what we are.
I'll make, I'll make a second for the proof of discussion, I second.
I'm, I'm going to say that, you know, we are all in favor of that as soon as we get the legal documents.
It's not starting back up, I wanna make sure it's renewed, so when you guys do sometime in the future say it, we don't have to go through. Right, but I don't wanna, it's something that, obviously, it's.
You don't wanna renew it if you know that we're not going to.
Right, and that, and not only that, is, is the way I was told is now the whole town is, as the board, you guys are involved in the program. Because everything goes through you guys, basically, for the approvals. And I don't wanna step out of line and do it without letting you guys know I'm gonna do it.
And so if it's a legal issue, Andrew, we are planning to have an executive committee, do you need, you need to have an answer on something before December thirty one, is that correct?
Uh, sooner than that, because the paperwork has to start getting filled out, then it has to be sent in, it has to be approved, and it goes through a process. I'm getting phone calls every day now from Chester County waiting to hear what the answer will be. All my house, my cell phone.
If I may, I would suggest, all he's really looking for is a motion of, of, a show of support for the Explorers Post, that's all he needs.
That's, that's all.
That's all he's looking for, he just wants a comfortable level of going through the paperwork, that you guys are in, in theory, in support.
What was your motion?
My motion was so that he could reaffirm, would, is it reaffirm the post, so it doesn't suspend?
Sure. So, can, would you amend your motion to reflect it with the town? Can you, as you said.
A vote of support.
A vote of support.
A vote of support.
I will amend my motion so it is a vote of support.
For the Explorers.
For the Explorers Program.
I second the amendment.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
No.
Okay. First of all, we pass the amendment and then the motion.
Right.
Okay, all in favor say of the amendment?
Aye.
Oh, oh, no, 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 I said, okay, now, the main motion, is there any discussion of the main motion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have you considered going with post one twenty eight, which is Rising Sun Scout group?
If it's a number that's already used as scouts, it's not a number you could use with the Explorer. Every, every group has to use a different number.
I've been told that that's not true. All the programs are under one twenty eight for Rising Sun. Would you be willing to join with one twenty eight?
That would be something we would all discuss together, with everybody. The next thing I want to talk about, uh, thank you guys for finally allowing another police officer to be hired, uh, because the town really needs it, I mean, between all the jobs and burglaries in this town, there, there's not enough police action going on, there's not enough people to cover the whole town. I would suggest you don't stop with only hiring one, but hire multiple to at least get it so there's two officers on duty twenty-four seven. So that way, two people can be rolling around the town, hitting each end of the town at the same time, so somebody doesn't say, oh, a cop passed, come one down now, we can kick this door in, cops are gonna be around for like twenty minutes. It would be better for the town if there was more officers than just one where you hired to fill this pop that was already there. On, on that note, Jamie was speaking, and he referred to you saying I was a chander. I do not appreciate that, there's other things that have been said by you, by Mr. Berkowitz, who's not here. And because of that, I just wanna say that I'd like you to cease and desist from slandering my name. If this doesn't happen, then I will seek legal advice, see what I need to do to get it stopped. Whether that be a lawsuit or charges, whatever has to happen with that, I'm not sure, but I'm gonna find out tomorrow. So I'm just gonna ask you, please stop talking negative about me.
Thank you.
Would you do that, please?
Sure.
All right, thank you very much, and that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, may I, Calvin, we can, Calvin?
Yes.
We can read this letter?
Uh, yes, the one to Attorney Ishak.
Mr. Fisher, if I may, with, with the residents' understanding, I'd like to read a letter in response to Mr. Ishak's.